Evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterville Planning Board meeting. We will kick off with approval for the minutes for the August 26 Planning Board meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? I think unanimous, Ann.
Tom?
Tom? Yeah, he had his hand up. Yep. Okay. Item number two, disclosure of conflict of interest. Does anybody have any conflicts on votes that they were to take tonight?
I'm going to abstain from item number three.
Okay.
Okay.
Conflict on the Rusty Lantern.
Okay.
I've been notified as in butter. Plus, I believe the seller is William Mitchell, Billy Mitchell. He's a cousin of mine.
Okay. Any other conflicts? Okay. Item number three. Elm City LLC is appealing a decision by the Waterville, City of Waterville Historic Preservation Committee, Commission denying the exterior sign proposed for 175 Main Street. Ann, would it be better to do the presentation or hear from the commission first?
I think you want to hear from my applicant.
Okay. Yep.
I'm gonna, my name is Paul Yurenik, and I'm representing Elm City 173 LLC. And I'm just gonna speak for a few minutes, and then my colleague, Richard Uchita, will come up. Okay? I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna hand out a few elevations. I'm gonna reference a few things when I talk, and I just thought it might be helpful that you. When I say elevations, these are elevations of the building. What the front of the building looked like before we started working on it.
Good, how are you? Thank you.
Can I ask you just one issue before Mr. Yurenik?
Sure.
Probably would be for counsel, but I think we all.
His mic is on.
It is on.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. We all take these matters rather seriously, and the very first thing I think we need to discuss is the date of the hearing and the date that the decision was rendered. That body at that time had 15 days to provide everyone with specific findings of fact. That was not done.
Well, I think, let's just go through the presentation, because I don't know if that's part of what.
Well, I appreciate that, but my concern is, is that that in and of itself is appealable. But are you waiving that at this point, Mr. Yushida?
No.
Yes, okay, thank you, all right. As I said, I just want to take a few minutes to talk a little bit about my history with this building and the commitment both myself and Elm City have taken since this property was purchased about 10 years ago. Many ways in what we're doing, I see it really as an ongoing work that we're doing, not only on this building, but on many other properties downtown. And I think that, you know, our record of investment and restoration, and I'm using the word restoration because if you look at those plans that I just distributed to you, shows what this building looked like when we purchased it 10 years ago. Actually, I think our commitment to this building is almost foundational in itself to the creation, to the historic district downtown. The, I should say, to the expansion of the historic district downtown. I was the only person from Waterville who, when the main historic preservation committee met in Skowhegan to review the application to expand the historic district. I was the only person from Waterville or building owner who attended that meeting and spoke in supporting the expansion of that district. So, you know, in many ways, as I said before, my commitment and our commitment to honoring this building goes back to the very beginning. You know, this, this property has been the beneficiary of an investment of over $6 million, and much of that $6 million has gone to preserving its historical character. I believe that this financial commitment underscores that we never ever take actions that would jeopardize this building's historical integrity. Also, I think it's important to note that the investment in this property was only made possible through the generosity of some of our key partners, including Grug Powell and the Alphonde Foundation. Their faith in our vision was essential, and without their significant support, this, this building still might be vacant, it still might be dilapidated, and still might have Judy's wigs in the front windows. Our success, I think, is a testament to the fact that we delivered on our promise to revitalize this property. As you look at those drawings in front, yeah, I know the print is small, et cetera, but just quickly, the current condition of the facade, the front of the building, belies the property state prior to our involvement. Let me just make a few points. The top floor of the building was previously marred by a large rusted fire escape running the entire width of the front of the building that left several rust stains running down the building from top to bottom. If you look at the fourth floor, there was an old rusted fire escape went along the entire front of the building. There were large structural cracks throughout the building that required specialized reinforcement using epoxy. All the joints, the cast stone ledges, they were all meticulously repaired. Portland Pie storefront was once covered by a very unsightly rusted steel metal grill. We went beyond standard repairs on this building when we meticulous repaired holes from previous signage that was on the building, usually using historically accurate mortar and ensuring the masonry surfaces remain undamaged. We also carefully removed layers of old paint from the brick. In no way did we ever use any type of sandblasting or other, any other type of method that would come close to damaging the surface of those brick that are there. I've worked on a lot of historic buildings in my 50-year career, so I have experience in this. This extensive involuntary work was taken out of a genuine and proven care for the property. Having invested millions into reversing years of neglect and preserving this building's historical integrity, often performing this work, that I remind you, was not mandated. We request that the installation of a very modest, appropriate sign be approved as part of this building's renewed commercial life. I did a lot of work, a lot of research, finding a company that could identify the existing stone on the building and match it. I finally found a company in Vermont, Vermont Stone Art was their name, who came to Waterville, inspected the building, inspected the stone, and was able to identify the limestone. Let me also remind you that this proposed sign, this proposed limestone sign, it's 72 inches by 20 inches, six feet by 20 inches. That equates to 10 square feet, okay? The brick facade on Main Street and Apple Street that we're talking about is 8,900 square feet. If you do the math, you will note that we are only removing .001 percent of the brick. That is 1,000th of a percent of brick to install this sign. You know, additionally, I find it ironic that the city is allowing our neighboring building, the Edith Building, that was built during the same time period and is also in the historic district, to be demolished if the owner so wishes. Seems like a double standard to me. And lastly, do you know what the oldest masonry building on Main Street is? It's called, it was, it was called Tyconic Row. That's the building across from the Lockwood Hotel. It is currently now the Green Block and Studio. Little over a year ago, the city allowed me to install modern signage on that property. That building dates to 1825. Do you think that signage on that building has done anything to negate the historical character of that building or the history of it? I don't think so. But yet, here I am, arguing for signage on this property that matches all of the original materials, et cetera, of the building. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Yurenik?
Well, let's just do the presentation, and then we can do questions after, okay?
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Richard Uchita. In addition to being a manager of Elm City 173 LLC, I'm the general counsel at Colby College, and I'm here representing Elm City and the college, who is the owner of the, of the LLC. So as Paul indicated as an overview, we're here, obviously, to appeal the denial of the signage by the, by the commission for the, for the building at 173. And while we appreciate the commission's views on how it viewed this particular sign, we have sort of a different take in how to look at the sign and whether it's permissible under the ordinance. But before I go through the precise language of the ordinance, and I've got copies of it here, and if we need additional copies for the board to look at, I just want to tell you a little bit about why, why the Powells, why the Powell family, why does the Powell name belong on this particular building? So, we picked the Powells, and not just Greg Powell, but also Kirk Powell, and I think some of you who've been here in Waterville for a long time probably remember Dr. Powell, because of what they mean, what that family means to Waterville, and frankly, what that family means to Main Street today. So if you'll just bear with me, because I think this has impact on why this sign and what we're doing with this sign. Dr. Powell was born here in Waterville in 1929, and he enrolled at Colby College in 1947. And in 1949, he leaves Colby College, leaves Waterville to go to Tufts Dental School. And I guess back then, you didn't have to get a bachelor's, you know, bachelor's degree to go to a professional school like that, so he goes off to Tufts. He graduates from Tufts in 1953. He doesn't return to Waterville. Instead, what he does is he goes into the Navy for a number of years, and then finally, about 1955 or 1956, he decides to return to Waterville and open a practice here. And for those of you who knew him, he was in practice for some, almost 45 years here in Waterville. But most importantly, he decided to come back to Waterville and invest his life and his time here in the city. And that's what he did. He was a member of the Kiwanis Club, he was the chair of the Waterville Board of Education, he was chair of the YMCA that subsequently becomes the Alphonde Hughes Center, he was on that building committee, he served on the Board of Trustees at Colby College in the middle to late 1980s, and often with the singular focus of what's going on downtown, how can the college help with what's happening in the 80s in Waterville. He was on the medical staffs at Seton and Thayer Hospitals and headed up the local chapter of the American Dental Association. And what his legacy and impact for us was that he decided to come back to this city, invest himself in this city at a time when he had sort of the world at his doorstep and could have gone anywhere, but decided to come back to Waterville. And by the way, his family was not a longstanding family in Waterville. His parents came from Canada and had Kirk Powell here in Waterville. The other key thing is the friendship he developed with Harold Alphonde, and I need not say anything more about, about Mr. Alphonde. So fast forward, as Paul said, to 2014, 2015, and the college is looking for a partner to invest in the downtown. And Greg Powell, who happened to be at that point the chair of the Harold Alphonde Foundation after a series of meetings, decides to go to his board and provide the seed funding, the seed funding for what ultimately becomes 173 Main Street and a number of other buildings that, that money was sprinkled into up and down Main Street. Not only was that seed money important just from the standpoint of this particular building, and I'll get into that in just a second, but when other donors and frankly, our board, the Board of Trustees saw that there were people who believed in the redevelopment of downtown Waterville, that money started to come forward, and that was the money that ultimately provides for the improvements that go up and down, up and down Main Street. So it was, it was that sense of investment in the city which Kirk Powell instilled in Greg that caused all of that funding to come forward and turn Main Street into where it is today. And so, we've always thought, as Kirk, sorry, as Paul talked about, how can we best honor the Powell family for all of that, because it's sort of a new era it ushered in in connection with the redevelopment of this city? And it seemed only fitting that our very first building, our very first improvement in the city, which was 173 Main Street, ought to be the building where the Powell name goes on, because it did help usher in a new age of investment here in Main Street. And then it was my colleague, Paul Yurenik, who lovingly restored the building, as he, as he explained. So again, we wanted to find a way to honor the Powell family for its investment here in Waterville, and particularly the investment here on Main Street in this particular building. So let me turn to the ordinance now, and I want to just reiterate what Paul said, which is, we try, we appreciate, we appreciate what this ordinance means to this city and the importance of this ordinance and the historic district that it has really helped to create. So the ordinance gives control over, among other things, any exterior feature that occurs on a building, including the design of a sign. And it also puts a premium on what does that sign or what do those exterior features look like from Main Street? So, fair enough. And there's got to be some kind of basis, historic basis, for what it is that you seek to do. And maybe before I go on, I don't know if you've got the ordinance in front of you, but if you'd like, I can pass out copies of it, if that would be helpful to look at the factors that I'm about to go through. So let me do two things. I'm gonna pass out the pictures of the sign we plan to put up on the building. Start with you. Pass these out, you want me to pass them down, or?
Yeah, thank you.
And we come back through with the ordinance.
Thank you.
And then, let me just come back through with the ordinance itself, so if you don't have a copy, I can, in front of you, you can, you can grab a copy. So, as you know from the ordinance, what the commission has the duty to do is to look at particular factors or criteria in determining whether a particular alteration to a building or a structure in the historic district matches up to the criteria. And no one criteria is definitive. Instead, I think they need to look at the big picture and look at the criteria, and those criteria appear in section 11 of the ordinance, so it's a couple of pages into the ordinance where both they focused on, rightly so, and where are the subject of our appeal is. So the first factor I'd urge you to look at is number one, which talks about the fact that there should be no alterations to a particular structure or, that's been in the district, unless there are actions which will, and I'm quoting from it, will preserve or enhance the historical and architectural character of the structure and are visually compatible with the viewscape. And so, what, as Paul explained, what we did is took time to rehabilitate this building, and the sign is part of that rehabilitation. And we provided in the initial appeal application pictures of other signs along Main Street, and I hope, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at those signs, but that are exhibits to our application. I'm happy to provide additional copies of my application, if that's, if that's important. But what we try to do is make sure that this particular sign blended in with the other building signs along Main Street. And as Paul said, we selected limestone over granite, which is kind of what you do with a sign these days, a granite sign, because the color, the size, the scale, and the view from Main Street is consistent with the other signs along Main Street that are building signage. And the whole idea behind this building rehabilitation, including this sign, is to try to make the look be more compatible with the viewscape and give some sense of restoration to the facade of this particular building based on what the structure looked like so many years ago. And so our work on the building and our work on the design of the sign, we hope, we hope you find preserves the character of that structure, and at the very least, also enhances the historic nature of the structure through that sign, because it matches some of the other building signage on Main Street. So that's, that's criteria number one. Then let's move to criteria number four, which is the next applicable one, and it talks about the fact that all structures and sites shall be recognized as products of their own time, and that alterations that have no historical basis or create a false sense of historical development shall be discouraged. I skipped over a couple of those words there. So the question here is whether this alteration has no historical basis or it creates a false sense of historical development. And I guess one of the reasons that we told you about the Powell family is because this sign does in fact have historical basis based on the way in which the resources came to bear for this building to be rehabbed. bear for this building to be rehabbed. And the name Powell now will come to represent the power of reinvestment in the city, in Waterville, and particularly on Main Street. And then secondly, as Paul noted, this is an endpoint of a larger rehabilitation of this building to preserve this building. And the sign is just sort of the crowning achievement or the cherry on top, whatever analogy you want to use in terms of how this building needs to be finished off. Third, the signs above the second floor windows are consistent with some of the signage that does have historical basis on Main Street. You see pictures of several signs in our application that are partway up buildings that are very similar to the sign that we propose here. And in fact, I think we should pray we have a picture of your building next door with a sign at exactly the same elevation and size way, way, way back when that was on that building. And that's simply to show this sign is not out of place in terms of what has happened on Main Street in the past. One of the things that the Commission said is that we didn't use products back from the time of construction in connection with this sign. But that's actually not what the ordinance says. What the ordinance says is you recognize that buildings are a product of a particular time. And then you make sure that the alterations that you seek to do to a building don't cause harm, that don't erase a sense of history. And for all the reasons, I won't go back into them again, we don't think that this sign, as proposed, erases history or provides a false sense of history. When you look at the sign color, the sign size, the sign scale, the sign appearance, if anything, it preserves the historic character of the street and of this particular building. Then take a look at number five, criteria number five, another one of the criteria the Commission looks at. And it says, changes that may have taken place in the course of time are also, well, are evidence of history, of the history and development of a structure or site and its environment. And these changes may have acquired significance in their own right, and this significance shall be recognized and respected. Note that what the ordinance says is that there are particular changes that occur in the course of time that also constitute history. That particular change, this particular change, started to occur in 2014 with an era in which Waterville's Main Street began to be revitalized. And Kirk Powell frankly represents the spirit of investment in the city and passed that on to Greg Powell and the foundation to provide help at a critical time in this city's history and in our efforts at the college to revitalize Main Street. And in the words of the ordinance, this sign seeks to recognize and respect this history as did our restoration of this building. We hope that 25 years from now, 50 years from now, 100 years from now, people look back at this building and the Powell sign and remember why it is that this particular sign went in at this particular time and what it represents for the city and for Main Street. And then if you move to item 10, criteria number 10, it says contemporary design for alterations and additions to existing properties is permitted when it does not destroy significant historical, architectural, or cultural material, and the design is compatible with the size, scale, material, and character of the property, neighborhood, or environment. So actually, under the historic district ordinance, you're allowed to provide for or build in contemporary designs and alterations and additions as long as you don't significantly destroy the historical, architectural, or cultural material, and the design is compatible with, with the size and scale and material and character of the property. So again, with respect to the sign, as Paul noted, the size, the scale, the color, even the appearance blends in with other signs in the district and with this particular building. We are not removing a significant amount of brick, as noted by the Commission. Paul gave you the math on that, and my math is not great, but I, I think that hopefully his is. We're confident also that if the sign were ever removed, if it had to be removed decades from now, that we could find or produce a similar kind of brick or other kind of finish on that building that would not represent therefore a significant historical, architectural, or cultural destruction of the facade of that building. And finally, we think that this isn't actually a contemporary design, which the ordinance provide, tries to provide an exception for. In fact, this is actually quite compatible with what's along Main Street, what has historically been along Main Street, and what a person driving up and down the street or walking up and down the street, which is an important factor in all of this, the viewscape, is, is compatible. And then finally, there's criteria number 11. Whenever possible, new additions or alterations to structures shall be done in such a manner that if the additions or alterations are removed in the future, the essential form and integrity of the structure would be unimpaired. And I'll simply say this, if we did have to ever take down that sign, we're not going to interfere with or impair the structure's integrity. And I'm sure we can find a design of some kind at that point that would be satisfactory to members of the Commission. We're confident in that. So let me make a couple of final remarks. The sign was rejected because the Powells, the Commission felt that the Powells had no historical connection to the building or the historic district. That's actually not true. They have a very strong connection to this building and to the district itself and what it has become today. But for Greg's abiding philosophy passed on from his father about the importance of investment in this community, that building either would have been substantially delayed or may not have been improved at all. And as you know, that was the very first building that spurred a kind of redevelopment that has occurred on Main Street. Second, there was criticism that the Powells were never owners or occupants of this building. The ordinance doesn't say you have to be an, you know, an owner or an occupant for something to go up onto that building and particularly a sign. And in fact, what the ordinance says is that the Commission has jurisdiction over the design, not the content, the design of a sign and making sure that it is historically thoughtful under the Commission's purview. Third, we're not removing a substantial portion of the historic brick. And I won't go through the math again. Fourth, this sign is sort of the last piece, as I said, to the rehabilitation of this building. And we think it's perfectly in alignment with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. And fifth, we think that under the ordinance, which has, has, I won't say exceptions, but provisions for how you add in, how you alter a building, how you add something to a building, we think we fall perfectly within those particular provisions. I want to just say one thing, and that's inciting our differences with the Commission's decision. We don't want to be viewed as undercutting every, you know, the things that they're trying to do and the importance of the historic district here in Waterville. They, they're doing a great job. We're proud to be in that district. And as Paul said, when the opportunity came up to put this property into the district, and we could have objected, but we did not, we sided with putting this property in the district because of how thoughtful we could do with this building, the kinds of alterations and additions that matter. We don't think this sign undercuts the historic themes and the vision that the historic district ordinance tries to preserve. So we'd ask you to grant the appeal and have a certificate of appropriateness issued for the sign. And then, Mr. Nail, you asked me about the minutes. We obviously do not waive that, but we're hoping that based on the merits of our presentation, that the planning board will see fit to grant our appeal.
You have to put on your mic.
Counsel, you agree with me that the purpose of the findings is that this board, if we didn't have any findings, we couldn't hear the case. It has to be remanded back to them to come up with specific findings of fact.
I would agree with you that the ordinance requires specific findings of fact, and it's sort of a founding principle that a board sitting as an appellate board kind of needs findings in order to figure out what to do.
And are you accepting their supplement with what they consider their findings?
I, so I think the answer is yes to that question. In other words, I think that what they did try to do was justify the basis for their decision. And that's fair. That's fine.
So with your presentation and their findings, do you agree with me that our responsibility is to look at those findings, listen to your argument, and whatever research that we have done, to either determine that the decision that they made was, they made an error of law, they abused their discretion, or the facts do not substantiate or support their decision?
I would agree with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions?
You, you made one comment, and I want to make sure I understood it. I thought I heard you say that the sign was part of the original renovation plan.
Yeah, if I, if that's what I said, that's not what I, what I meant to say. That's not true.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would say that the sign comprises sort of the crown jewel on our rehabilitation plan, but it was not shown on drawings.
And do you know, or would Paul need to speak to it, when were the original renovations completed?
Golly, do you remember, Paul, when you completed the work on that building, to the extent you ever complete the work on that building?
About like a year.
I'm going to guess 2016.
2016, thank you.
How long did it take you?
Do you think it was 2017?
A little bit later than that. No, excuse me. It was 2020.
How about this, was it before COVID?
I think it started in about 2016. I'm going to say probably 2017.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Would someone from the Commission like to come up now?
I'm the chairman of the Waterville Historic Preservation Commission. And I've, the Commission did write a letter in response, and I hope that you all have that. I'm going to briefly read that. Planning Commission, on January 25th, 2025, Elm City LLC, 137, 173 LLC filed a certificate of appropriateness request with the Waterville Historic Preservation Commission. They want to remove a substantial portion of the historic yellow brick from the building in the Main Street Historic District, formerly known as the Waterville Savings Bank, in order to install a limestone sign with Powell as the inscription. At a meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission on April 3rd, Representative Elm City explained that the new sign was to honor Greg Powell for his contributions to Waterville and Colby. However, they noted that Mr. Powell had no historical connection to either the building or to the Waterville Historic District. Waterville Historic Preservation Code, Section 161B, which is based on national and state standards, says that except as specified above, a structure designated as a historic landmark or site or a structure located in a designated historic district or related structures or improvements such as walls, fences, light fixtures, steps, pane located in a designated historic district shall not be altered, and no certificate of appropriateness shall be issued for such action unless these actions will preserve or enhance the historical and architectural character of the structure and are visibly compatible with the, with the viewscape. The Historic Preservation Commission pointed out that the proposal was not using products from the time of the building's construction, nor did the proposed alterations have any historical basis but would create a false sense of historic development. Therefore, the proposal was inconsistent with Section 16111B4, which sets forth specific requirements and provisions on alterations. The Commission noted that removing a substantial portion of the yellow, of the historic yellow bricks would be the kind of extensive damage disfavored in Section 16111B11, providing for restoration of the alternate, if the alteration is removed in the future. Commission concluded that the proposal did not preserve or enhance the historic nature of the building. Moreover, the proposal did not use products of the time of the building's construction, but did create a sense, a false sense of historic development and did substantial permanent damage to the structure. Since the proposal was contrary to the basic rule for appropriateness and did not conform to any exceptions, the Commission, by unanimous vote, rejected the proposal. On June 2nd, Elm City appealed the Commission's decision to the Waterville Planning Board. The appeal asserts that the planning board ignored the substantial rehabilitation work done on the building. While the Commission, the city, the residents are all grateful for the extensive rehabilitation work Elm City has done on the building, the Commission cannot circumvent its regulations. The appeal contends that the Commission failed to credit the photographs proffered by the hearing. These photos were pictures of signs on buildings erected more than 100 years ago. However, the Commission found that these photos demonstrate that Elm City's proposed sign would not be consistent with the architecture of the building since it, since that building did not have a limestone sign at the period. And in other words, we can provide you pictures of the 1920s of the building that shows that there is no limestone sign of any nature on the building. The appeal also referred to awnings that were common on Main Street streets in the These have been outlawed as a fire hazard. The appeal correctly points out that the deficiency in a denial letter, which only states the relevant portions of the code without fully explaining how those provisions relate to the facts. The Historic Preservation Commission, which is in its first year of operation, indeed, this is the first meeting that we have had where we had to decide a substantial issue, we're fully aware that we've got to correct these kinds of deficiencies. Personally, worked 15 years of administrative law and was surprised, in fact, that we hadn't more fully explained our decision, which I have tried to do in this letter. While the appeal refers to Mr. Powell's contributions to Waterville, which included his longstanding role as president and CEO of the Harold Alfond Foundation, he has no historic relation to the building itself, other than as my, the opposing counsel has pointed out, that he's been involved in funding the rehabilitation work. Finally, the appeal does not demonstrate how the proposed modification would preserve or enhance the historic nature of the building, nor does the appeal explain how the proposed modification is compatible with historic viewscape. Accordingly, the Commission was correct in refusing to issue a certificate of appropriateness. For these reasons, we ask the planning board to sustain our decision.
Thank you. Questions for the Commission?
Thanks, Claude. I have a few things. First, you know, I do agree that, you know, the, the effort, the time, the thoughtfulness that went into the renovation of the building shouldn't be justification for circumventing anything. I also agree that removal of that sign in the future, for whatever reason, would certainly cause a problem. But I wanted to ask you, so in the first paragraph, you say they want to remove a substantial portion of historic yellow bricks. What is the threshold for substantial in the Commission's point of view? Is it one brick? Is that substantial?
Here, I'm speaking only as the chairman of the Commission and not, oh, I'm only speaking I'm only speaking as the chairman of the commission and not as the commission ourselves. This is the first time we've been presented with a situation like this, and it seems to us that taking a big chunk of yellow bricks, that they don't make them anymore, is a substantial change to the facade of this building. As I noted, there never was a limestone sign on this building.
And that's, that's, sorry, that was, that was one of my next questions, is were there limestone signs when the building was built? Was that a popular material to use for these types of signs in buildings that were built in that time period?
Yes, many of the other buildings on Main Street have those kinds of limestone signs. Mostly, the signs refer to either the person who built the building or to the person who paid for the building.
So, I mean, one could argue that that limestone, the limestone that would be put there, has probably been around that long, because it takes a while to make it, right?
Yes.
So, and then...
I would like to note one thing about this building. This building was designed by Mr. Butterworth, who was a famous architect at the time, and the building itself was made with stressed concrete, which was a novel building process at the time. Indeed, that process is what made the New York City skyline possible. So this building is a, and here, again, I want to acknowledge the work that the LLC, that Elm City has done to rehabilitate the building. This is a wonderful thing that they've done. I just don't think that it justifies changing the historic nature of the building.
You know, and you make a very good point, right? There was probably a reason the sign wasn't put up there when it was built, or a sign wasn't put there. I'm guessing it wasn't the first building to be built on Main Street. There were probably others that were already built that had signs, so that was probably done with some level of intent. And the only other thing I want to throw out there is, in the second paragraph, you know, you say Mr. Powell had no historical connection to either the building or to Waterville's Historic District, and I would just, you know, kind of a rhetorical question, but do you think future generations are going to agree with that statement? Or do you think that they could look...
There's no question that since the Alphonso Foundation was formed in 1996, that one of the beneficiaries of their excellent work has been Waterville. So it could well be in another 100 years that people will want to remember Mr. Powell and his contributions. I just don't think that this building is the place to put up a sign, this kind of a sign. I would point out that the LLC has put up a sign. It's on the street level where a lot more people can see it, and it explains why Mr. Powell is significant. And we, quite frankly, approved that sign when the commission met. And in fact, there is a plaque commemorating Mr. Butterfield that was taken down sometime in the recent history, and we would like to see that restored.
Thank you, Claude.
If I may, good evening. My name is Tom Nail, and as you mentioned a little while ago, that this case, if you will, was one of first impression for you folks.
Yes.
And you issued a decision shortly after the hearing.
Yes.
And in your opinion, you provided what you thought at that time was your reasons why you denied. Is that correct?
We didn't elaborate as much as I think was probably necessary for the LLC to understand exactly what our decision was based on.
Okay. So our responsibility here tonight is to look at your findings.
Yes.
And decide whether or not there was enough evidence or findings to support your decision. Okay?
Yes.
And one of the findings that you made was that the project was going to eliminate a substantial amount of the bricks.
Yes.
That's the word you folks use, is substantial.
Yes.
If I go into the dictionary, it's going to tell me what substantial means. It means many.
Yes.
Do you, and I'm not cross-examining you, I'm just trying to figure out your basis for the decision that you made. Do you know the dimensions of a standard brick, a brick that goes into a building, let's say, today?
What am I guessing?
Six and a half inches.
Six and a half inches, yeah.
Okay, and the brick that is in the Main Street property is not a standard brick. Have you looked at it?
Yes.
It's nine and a half inches long and about three inches deep. And if I were to use Mr. Urenik's numbers, that the dimensions of the sign would cause the developer to remove 272 bricks.
That seems, that sounds pretty reasonable.
The building, as recited by Mr. Urenik, has 155,000 bricks. If I were to tell you that 1% of that is 1,500 bricks, but what they're proposing to remove is 272. Now, knowing that math, are you still standing with your position that that's a substantial amount?
Well, let me put it this way. 27 bricks that are irreplaceable is, it seems to me, to be a substantial number, even if it's not tearing down the entire facade.
So you're saying that 272 is a substantial amount, based on their 150,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, as I say, that's, if you take the limestone sign out, you've got a big gap.
Would you agree with me that reasonable folks could differ with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next concern I have is, at your meeting, you had mentioned that, I would, I'm going to say it's one of your findings, that Mr. Powell has no connection to the building. What do you know of Mr. Greg Powell? Do you know anything at all?
Oh, he's chairman of the Alphonso Foundation. He and Mr. Alphonso formed the foundation in 1996, using the proceeds from the sale of the Dexter Shoe Company.
But do you know anything about his philosophy as to when he guides Mr. Alphonso or the foundation into doing certain things? Do you know what it is that he looks for in making those decisions?
All I know about...
You don't?
All I know about the foundation is the various...
Wouldn't that have, wouldn't that have some...
The various projects that they've worked on.
Go ahead.
Let him answer.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's all I know about Mr. Alphonso is the various projects that the foundation has worked on. The Kent School, the Alphonso Youth Center here, and clearly, the LLC working for the rehabilitation of downtown Waterville.
Claude, may I ask, when did the historic ordinance pass?
Last year.
Okay, so when they redeveloped the building originally, it wouldn't have fallen within that historic ordinance, correct?
Uh...
Like in 2016, when they were doing it?
No, no, the ordinance took effect in, on January 1st of this year.
Okay. And so that would be the same for the building at the end of the street, the old, like...
Yes.
Hardware building. Okay, so that's why they didn't need to get the same approvals for signs on that building as this one?
Yes, in fact, that would be the same as for the Sterns Building, which was replaced by the Schuf Center.
Yep.
Or the bank building that was replaced by the Lockwood Hotel.
Okay, great, thank you for that. Do you know when the historic district expanded?
No, I don't know that.
Okay.
Is it...
Can you answer that?
Yes, I can understand that the, in 2016, Main Street was made out of the historic district.
Okay, the rest of Main Street, then.
Yes.
Thank you, Ron. He said 2016 for the record.
May I?
Sure.
The building at 173 that we're talking about, do you know whether or not it has any history at all with Colby that may have influenced Mr. Powell to rehabilitate that?
You would have to ask my...
Okay, so you had no idea when you folks made your decision?
No.
Did anyone do any research on that building, other than hearing what the LLC had to say when they came in?
Can you speak to that?
Hi, I'm Jessica Kuchar, and I am on the Historic Preservation Commission also. The Waterville Savings Bank building was built in 1903.
Tell them what else you do. Tell them what else you do.
I work at Waterville Historical Society. The architect was William Butterfield, which was noted on the plaque that was on the building, and as Claude did speak to the history of the building, it was the first building in Waterville to use reinforced concrete floor construction and was considered fireproof. And I did want to speak to the question about the limestone, because, Mr. Nail, as you stated, the Roman bricks are smaller than a standard brick, they're different than a standard brick, they are longer, narrower, and flatter. At no point have I heard today that the bricks are going to be ground out to a depth of four inches, because the sign proposed is to be inset, not put on the facade of the building. So if the bricks there are only three inches and the sign's four inches, what are we going And what we also are talking about is the alterations have no historical basis or create a false sense of historical development.
Jessica, I'm wondering if you could elaborate for me on that part. So as a historian, someone that does research and look at the history of Waterville and try to preserve that and share that history with others, like I've done the walking tours and all of that, the names on the buildings, is that part of that, like, research process? Does that provide evidence towards that, or...
Those were generally the person that built the building. A few of them are named for the business that was located in there, like Waterville Steam Laundry, and they were incorporated into the building as it was being built. But very often, it was to honor themselves, because they were building the building. So that's why this is considered a false sense of historical development, because Mr. Powell didn't build the building and wasn't alive at that time.
Thank you. There are other questions for Jessica?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll do. So, back to the, yeah, we...
Is your mic on, Patricia?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. Hello? Yeah. Back to discussion of structure, and that was helpful to hear that the bricks are veneer. I mean, I guess I was thinking earlier, what is the, how is the notion of structure being defined? Because an structural engineer would define it as what is supporting the building and holding it up. And if it's a metal, a metal or concrete, reinforced concrete, then that is the structure, and then the brick is a veneer, so it's not a structural material. But to a layperson, a building, building and structure might seem synonymous if they don't understand those concepts of structure. And so I'm very interested to hear, you said the three, the bricks are three inches deep, and then what comes after that? I, I'd be, I feel like, I don't know. It feels like that would be a good thing to know, if that is getting into the structural component. I mean, some, there must be drawings from the original building or studies that have been done on the structure. I don't, I don't know, but...
Tom found those measurements for the Roman bricks, because they do vary. There are Roman bricks still made, but not in that same way, and it's just known that Roman bricks are longer, narrower, and flatter than a standard brick. So he came up with the three inches from somewhere.
But you mentioned what was underneath the...
Right, what is.
You took them off, what would you find?
Right.
And that's what I'm wondering. Is that the structural? Because the way the, the way that number 11 in the ordinance reads, additions or alterations to structures shall be done in such a manner that if such additions or alterations were to be removed in the future, the essential form and integrity of the structure would be unimpaired. Because I have worked in, for architecture and engineering firms, when I hear the word "structure," I'm thinking of what supports the building and, and, but, so does that mean what supports the building, or does it just mean the visual part? Is that, am I making sense about the distinction between layperson's definition, maybe, of structure?
The ordinance specifically is talking about the facade.
The form.
Oh, the facade.
It's the form of the building.
Okay.
That would be the facade. What you see, the essential thing that we're doing as Historic Preservation Commission is preserving the view of downtown Waterville.
Okay, well, thank you for clarifying that.
We wanted to look the way it did historically, and in order to change something like that, it's got to meet specific criteria, and I don't think that this sign does meet those criteria.
Okay, so if I am understanding you right, when I read the word "structure" in this ordinance, I can translate that in my mind to the exterior shell?
Yes.
Or the visual impact? Okay, thank you.
Another question for you, Claude, I think, or maybe either one of you. Do you know, is Waterville working on applying for the main historic commission to be one of, what do they call them, the downtown? Certified local governments?
Yes.
Okay. Because I did, like, look through the qualifications of certified local governments, and the commission will be evaluating the city on how well they follow their ordinance and if they are maintaining the historic significance. So I'm just curious if the commission, Waterville's commission, thinks that this could impact that in any way?
Well, you're absolutely right, that this is the long-term goal of the city, is to become certified historically, and that's one of the reasons that the commission was formed to begin with, is... As, again, you're talking about getting points to a larger goal. And here, we would prefer, as a commission, that the Elm City, who has done such excellent work in rehabilitating this building, would join with us rather than take an adversarial position on our first decision that we have made as a commission.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, how about questions or comments from the public? Robin?
Yeah, thank you. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Robin.
You have to go to the...
I own The Robbins Nest, located at 173 Main Street. So you obviously have a big, sounds like a big decision to make. And it sounds like there are lots of things that I have no idea about. So what I will speak about is my own experience in the building. I opened in 2018 in a 360-square-foot space in the Hathaway Creative Center. And I got a lot of visitors, women in particular, who had worked in the shirt factory, who wanted to spend a few minutes sitting in a hallway where they used to sit with their coworkers eating their lunch. And I began to feel in that moment that I had a foot in the future and a foot in the past. When I had the opportunity to move to Main Street, that was important to me to, I still had that same feeling. The building that I'm in, when people walk in, they notice the tile floor. They notice the safe that still has a handwritten inspection log from, starting in 1917. The historic preservation, the care that the owners of this building have put in from using plaster on the ceiling to replicate what it would have looked like versus using another less expensive way to renovate the ceiling. These things are all important. And to me, they speak to their care of the building and their efforts to keep it historically accurate, correct. I can't speak to the ordinances. I can't speak to all of the work that everybody here has clearly done on this. But what I can say is that this space has allowed me to grow my business, has allowed me to hire 12 employees. And every single day, someone walks in and talks about how beautiful the building is and how, they want to know what was in it. We talk about Judy's Wigs all the time. We talk about Waterville Savings Bank. We have a customer that comes in who talks about how he used to come with his grandmother and hold her hat while she bought dresses in that building. So if we talk about history, those are all pieces of the history of the building. And I hope that someday, The Robbins Nest is a piece of the history of this building. And so for me, when I think about putting a sign up to honor the Powells, who have already spoken to all the wonderful things that they've done for the community, and I could speak some more about it, but I don't think I need to, I think that each, each, each piece of this building, each time in history, each person that's had an impact on it is part of that history. So to me, it makes sense for their name to be added to this building. And I hope maybe someday my name will be added to the building permanently. So this is my pitch as a tenant and a resident in that building.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Let me briefly recite just a little bit of the purpose and intent of the Historic Preservation Section here and see if you agree with me. Under this chapter, the heritage and economic well-being of the city will be strengthened by preserving its architectural and historical setting, conserving property values in unique areas fostering civic beauty and heritage promoting the use of historical, architectural significant buildings for the education and welfare of the residents of the city of Waterville. The intent of this chapter is to, in every way possible, assist property owners to maintain the integrity of the district while providing a basis for accepting compatible new construction. You agree with that?
Do I agree with the ordinance?
What I just mentioned here, what I just read, what the intent is.
The intent, oh, boy, I'm not an expert on this. I'd probably have to have you read it to me again and again. And nobody wants to hear that tonight, so...
What's being done at that building? Is it preserving the integrity of the building and enhancing the benefits of the downtown area?
What they've done already? Or what they plan to do with adding the sign? Or both? Which is your question?
Figured about the sign. If we look about, if we talk about a sign, we're looking at this, we're taking a very narrow interpretation of the statue, very strict construction. But broadly, do you feel that the intent is for, to develop the historic district, this particular building, and in doing so, would enhance the downtown area?
I think adding the sign would enhance the downtown area.
How many jobs have you created with your building?
I have 12 regular employees and another dozen that come in and help me during my busy holidays, so 24.
And Portland Pie Company has a substantial amount of...
They sure do.
And the second, third, and fourth floors are all occupied, all not being there for a period of about 10 years where the building was vacant.
Right.
Has the work that has been done on that building enhanced that building in and of itself?
Absolutely.
The rest of the downtown?
I wouldn't be there if that, if all of that work hadn't happened.
I don't think anybody's questioning the work. Or I don't, I want to stay on track because we have a lot to do tonight.
I beg to differ. It has awful lot to do with it.
I don't think anybody is questioning, we are specifically talking about adding a sign. So I need us to stay on task.
If we talk about just the sign, you're taking a very narrow interpretation of the statue.
I understand, Tom, please.
As a follow-up, I guess I would ask, do you believe adding the sign or not adding the sign will have any impact on your business in the future?
I think that adding the sign adds to the conversation about the building and adds to the interest and brings more people in to spend more time, to ask more questions, to want to be a part of what has happened and what is happening in Waterville.
Okay.
Any other, yes, sure.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Allen from West Street. I'm a neighbor of Mr. Frank's. I have a couple of different points. This seems to be a terribly long debate for a 10-square-foot sign. I believe this is a de minimis change that will not change the character of the building. If anything, I believe it adds to the historic nature of the building because as I walk up and down Main Street, as I drive up and down Main Street, I see these signs at the top of all of these buildings. And it's in limestone. I'm not sure of the color that they're planning to put up there. But all of those names are people who have, people builders, developers, who have had an important impact on the city. I've never heard of the Powells before tonight. But it seems they did something that started a significant change in the city. So I'm in favor of the sign, and I would like to move the question. Thank you.
I have a question, a couple of questions for you.
Yes.
As the expert that you are. Do you feel like a limestone sign creates a false sense of history?
I think it's a sign, I'm not sure, I'm not a geologist, so I'm not sure what color this is. I assume it's sort of gray. A lot of the other signs on Main Street are gray. That is a historic color, apparently, for signs, for buildings. But it seems the historic district, part of their goal would be to promote the historicity of the city. So proposing a sign that matches other historical buildings seems to be period appropriate.
Right.
I'm not an architect, I'm an engineer.
Right.
But...
See it in a lot of buildings, I bet.
I look at a lot of buildings, and I appreciate architecture. I don't think a 10-square-foot sign on an 8,900-square-foot building is a significant change.
Right. And do you, so that sounds to me like you also are sort of saying, but correct me if I'm wrong, that it is 100% compatible? Or compatible, excuse, 100% was my addition to that. But it's compatible to the character of the property, correct?
That's my opinion, yes.
All right. And that is pretty much all I had to ask.
Thank you.
Any other comments from?
Hello, I'm Joshua Schmazel. I'm a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. I'd like to talk about a few things. First of all, the Powell sign itself, not sure if this has been mentioned yet, but it does indeed use black lithochrome paint on it. So basically, most of the signs on Main Street, you know, they're, you know, your good old Main Street stone, or, you know, it doesn't matter what kind of stone it is. But the point is, this would have, like, basically, it would be a black font on a building, which, I mean, to me, I find it aesthetically pretty negative-looking, but I could be wrong. Also, secondly, I do have a lot of experience seeing these signs. You know, I think a lot of people these days are driving by and everything. But as a student who is currently in high school, not working age, but neither retirement age, I do spend a lot of time with my friends, you know, getting pizza or whatever, you know, walking down Main Street. And one of my routes takes me right in from the building with all my buddies. So regularly, I see this building and notice how, you know, it has these really nice, like, very symmetrical three blank sections, which is basically the form of the building, it's the architecture of it. It has these three blank sections. And adding this very sharp black would completely take away from the historic feel of it. And thirdly, one of my hobbies is nuzmatics. I collect coins. And therefore, I'm very well acquainted with the idea of forgeries. This is, by all accounts, a forgery. Uses old font, uses replica material manufactured this year, apparently, to try to copy something that usually is created 100 years ago, which is, if you look at the ordinance, against it, against our rules. So that's all I have to say, and I am against the installation of the sign.
Could I just ask for clarification? I was on the Historical Preservation Society, or I was on this committee, but I did not, I was not there when you guys created the ordinance. Can you repeat the part about the, it seemed to me like you were saying that the fact that they're using modern limestone instead of historic limestone is a detractor for you? Is that, or against the ordinance?
The point, I just was...
I just want clarification.
No, 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 you're totally right. I just meant the addition of the sign in general, that the style of the letters, the sign itself, the sign material, the whole kit and caboodle. And I was referencing the part of the ordinance, which I think talks about creating a false sense of history, if I remember correctly. So that's for clarification.
So in your opinion, the sign is not historic? Like, it doesn't reflect the period of the 1920s or reflects the other limestone granite signs?
Well, that's the point. Even with the black, with the black lacquer on it, A, it doesn't reflect it, and B, it reflects it all too well, I'm afraid. It's a forgery, as I said, so...
Well, so would you, okay. So is my understanding that that black paint is something that would have been on a new sign from that period would not have been uncommon to use? But as the time progresses, it comes away?
Exactly.
Right, so it's a new sign in the style of the old? So it's a reproduction. We're not reproducing the sign from, like, one that looks like it was built 100 years ago? It's like a reproduction of a sign when it was built 100 years ago?
Although many of the, I mean, this is just from my, me looking at postcards, I guess. But looking at many of the signs on buildings on Main Street, they did not have black lacquer back in the day. They usually were installed as just simply stone. Very few had paint on them. And if they did, they were at, like, very low levels, like in front of the doorway. So, yeah, of course.
Josh, thank you for...
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
To follow up, also, I'm interested in what you said about the black lacquer. So the actual, the sign itself, which we haven't seen any really close-up photos of, the way you described it, it made me wonder, is, is the limestone just flat and then the letters are painted on? Or are the, are the letters in relief and then they're also filled in with paint?
If I, no, if I'm looking at this kind of chart correctly, I believe it is engraved in and there is paint inside.
Okay, and, and you're saying that it does, that's the way the other original signs were constructed?
Minus the paint part, yeah.
That they were in relief, cut in in relief, and paint in the beginning, and then that deteriorated? Yeah, over the century, yeah. Okay, thank you both.
Josh, thank you for being a high schooler that's civically engaged and this interested in the history of your city. I think that is remarkable, so thank you.
Of course, have a great night.
Paul? Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Few things. Terms of limestone, modern limestone, old limestone, the stone is thousands of years old. Whatever was stone was put on a building in 1900 is no different than a stone that I'm putting on now. The stone is thousands of years old. The stone that I'm proposing is the same limestone that is on all of the other, that is on this building and I would say on all of the other buildings in town that have signs on them. In terms of, in terms of this discussion about black paint, I had, I had on the lettering, number one, the letters are recessed. It's not a surface sign, they're not painted on. I had told the Historic Preservation Commission prior that was optional. If they did not, if they were opposed to that and they just wanted the limestone itself, that I would have that black paint removed. If you want to make that a condition of approval, I'm perfectly happy to do that.
A question for you, Paul?
Yes.
What are you going to do with the bricks once they're removed from the building?
What do you want me to do with them?
I don't know. I think that it sounds to me like some people in this room would love it if they heard you say that you're going to put them in storage in case that...
I will do my best. I will do my best. I have a mason in mind who's done a lot of historic preservation work for me over the years, that would do this work. And I will do my absolute best to, when we cut those bricks out, they're not being ground down, the entire brick will be cut out. We'll cut the masonry all around it. We'll do our best to take these bricks out and to save them. Can I guarantee you that every single brick will be not damaged? No. But that I think there's a pretty good chance that I could save a great majority of them, and I'm more than happy to do that.
Okay. And what would, if we, if this sign does not come to fruition and you're somehow not allowed to put a sign on your building, this sign that you want on your building, what would option two be? Do you have, do you have a backup plan for this sign? If this isn't passed?
I don't. I don't, I don't.
I was just curious.
Yeah, no, no, I don't. Thank you.
Ron? If I could follow up on that?
Yeah, sure.
Again.
Come on up, Ron, you can speak next, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, I saw all the material that I reviewed on this. I did see something that said that you all could meet with the Historic Preservation Committee to discuss other options for the sign that people, am I, am I correct? I don't know which, which sheet I read it in, but one of the letters maybe, that they were invited to come and consult with the members of the Historical Preservation Commission about acceptable options? Is that correct? I see blank looks.
Nothing that I'm aware of.
Well, I saw it somewhere. So I was just wondering if that had, if any more discouraged...
The commission is always open to discussions about the historic viewscape in downtown Waterville. As far as that, we're always there.
Yeah, I see.
If you want to talk to us, we're happy to.
Okay, but I'm getting, I saw it somewhere and I thought...
I saw the same thing.
And, and it doesn't seem like any discussions have happened. Thank you. Ron?
Ron Merrill, a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. First of all, Butterfield, Waterville Savings Bank is the architect. And I do want to be repetitive. It's been said earlier this evening that I want to thank all of those that helped to preserve the Waterville Savings Bank Building. I used to get my hair cut across the road there in the former La Verdius Building. And when I was having my neck shaved... and when I was having my neck shaved, I talked to the barber. Over the years, that this building will be demolished within the next several years. And years kept going on and going on, and we saw the building being deteriorated, and then all of a sudden, we found out that it was going to be redone as a historic preservation building. I'd also want to say that Paul has been more than pleasant, he's never been abrasive in any of the, the meetings that we've had, and this is basically two different views of a situation which we have for historic preservation. I'm going to take you on a small walking tour. Next door, we have the Edith Building, and do you realize that it's named after Mr. Butterfield's wife? Okay, so now, we will not, and when we're on the walking tour, we can say, the next building over, the architect was Mr. Butterfield. Okay, so now, that, that building, the upper floor, was Thomas Business College. I went to Thomas College, I didn't go in that building, I went on Silver Street, and Tom, you probably went into Woolworth's, which was at the bottom.
Oh, there was never Thomas Business College on the second floor, it was Watson Thomas Business College. It became Thomas Business College over on Silver Street.
I stand corrected, Tom, but, but I'm sure that you did, did visit Woolworth's at the bottom, and was it, what, FW Woolworth's? Okay.
Okay, keep us moving, Ron.
Okay, so then, this all has a point. So then I continue down, then, then I have the Eden Building, and the sign, it says 1923, it's on the second story, and then I have the Laundry Building, at the signage very top, 1913, the Mower Building, 1905, that's on the third story, and I'm not going to cross the road to Joe Smoak Shop, because I got to take the walking tour to a abrupt ending, and basically, what I'm saying here is, the signage, if anything, should be, so we do not get confused in the walking tour, should be the Butterfield Building, and we do have very attractive signage at the very bottom of the entrance, on some glass, and then I believe we have some signage in the back of the building that also states what the building is now, which is the Powell Building. So I think all parties have been reasonably satisfied. One more thing, one more thing, and that is, somebody was talking, yeah, Paul, Paul, I believe, was talking about the, the, the old hardware store, where we have, I guess, four names of people that were put on, and this was before the Historic Commission was organized. I believe that was your Waterville hei, Waterville Hardware, and that did burn, and most of the building was not being able to be used, therefore, I think the top part, where there was signage there, is something that is built, built more recently. And again, again, I'm being repetitive, I, I'm very grateful and thankful for this building that is being saved, and they are to be commended. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Yep. You want to say it, Tom?
May I?
Sure.
Thank you for the walking tour.
Okay, you're welcome.
Again, there was some discussion from my right, my colleague, as to what some of the options are, once a decision has been rendered by, by you folks, and that is to have the opportunity to get together and, and see if there were some other options. I'm not so much concerned with what are the other options, my concern is, is to whether or not, if you had further information, or better information, as to who this person is. I don't think anyone knows who Powell is, but let me get on a little bit more track here before the chairman attempts to close me out here. There's a lot of history in that building, and it, it has some connection to Mr. Powell. Trust me, I've been here all of my life, 77 years, and the building has been, I've never known it as the Edith Building, I've always known it as the Haynes Building, I've known it as the Levine's Building, and I've known it as the bank, and I've never been confused in any...
It's not the Edith Building.
What's that?
It's not the Edith Building.
What's the name on the top of the building?
There isn't one.
No, that's a problem, there has been no name.
Okay, that's the one down the, okay.
But it is the...
All right, so there is no name on the building, but in 1914, there was a gentleman born here in Waterville, Louis Lester Levine. He grew up, and while it was the bank, he was...
Tom, does this connect back to the sign or to Powell? I'm just, it's almost nine o'clock, so I'm trying to...
Yeah, I understand it, so why, is there a time limit?
Well, I, we have...
I mean, I want to make sure that we don't make the wrong decision here tonight, folks.
I'm just trying to keep our...
I think everyone here mostly is, is sort of narrowed in on what the composite is.
Tom, please, I'm trying to keep us, like, on task here, okay? I really do appreciate all of the, the timeline and everything, I, I think we really need to stay on task and focused.
Okay, but first of all, I'll do respect to the chairperson.
One of the things that you could do...
I don't need to be reminded to stay on task. My job is to make sure, before we take a vote, everyone has a pretty good understanding as to why the Powell sign is being proposed.
I, we have read the materials that were provided.
And one of the things, one of the things that you could do...
It's very light on what's material.
One of the things that you'd do would be to remand the, the issue back to the Historic Preservation Commission...
Have a discussion?
So that we could have further discussions, and see if we can come to some amicable arrangement that probably would be the smartest thing to do in light of...
And when you go back...
Please stop interrupting.
In light of the substantial issue we have with our decision and its shortcomings.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and I appreciate the fact that it's getting kind of late, and I'll try to make this as fast as possible. A couple of things that I just wanted the planning board to know. Let's remember that additions and alterations are allowed under this ordinance, they're not prohibited, but you have to meet a certain standard, a historical basis standard, preservation of the integrity of the building and the area, and so I just urge you, I'm not going to go back through it, I would just urge you to look at those standards, number one, number four, number five, number 10, and number 11. Those are sort of the rules of the road that we operated under in trying to get approval, and that in fact, in fairness, the commission operated under as well. So I just urge you to do that, as you think about, about your decision. The second thing, in the materials that you all received for the appeal, you'd mentioned, they had mentioned a plaque that honors actually Mr. Butterfield, the Waterville Savings Bank. We were able to find that plaque, and we're happy to put that up on the building at an appropriate location. I just wanted you to be aware, we were able to find that, and it does honor the building, but we'd like to do that with the Powell sign, and not in lieu of the Powell sign, but I did want you to be aware of that. And then finally, as, as Mr. Urenic mentioned, while we're happy to have these discussions, the Powell sign, I think, does fit the intent of the ordinance, and so, as you think about, is this addition or alteration permitted? Because the historic district ordinance is not, is not an ordinance that says everything's got to remain locked in time, can't be altered, can't be changed. Does it fit the ways in which the ordinance allows you to alter a building or a structure?
Do, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you think that 2014 is a historical significance to that building?
Actually, I do, and number five, criteria number...
I've read the ordinance, I just want you, an answer.
Yeah, and I guess I tried to say that in ways that might have been inartful, when I talked about ushering in a new era of investment that the Powells drove, but yes, to answer your question.
Okay. Were either of the Powells in Waterville, like, living in Waterville when the building was born, built?
When the building was built?
Yeah.
Back in the 20s, no. So Mr. Powell, Kershaw Powell, Kirk, was born in '29, and so I think that was after the, I think that was after that building was built, yeah.
Thank you. I think we could move to a vote of some sort. So we either need to accept the Historic Commission's recommendation, deny it, and accept the proposal from Elm City, or, I guess, ask them to revisit. So I'll entertain a motion.
The motion I make is to...
Turn your mic on.
Motion I'm making is to grant the appeal as asked for, that the sign be erected as prepared, that the findings that were made by the Historical Committee do not support a denial. Again...
Second.
Okay.
I second that, thank you.
It's important that the findings of this board be in the record, because if there is an appeal into Superior Court, they're going to want to know, you know, what it is my basis for, for the motion, that I agree with counsel as presented, the most significant part is section 161, 11, 5, that I believe that what has been done on, in the course of time deserves to be recognized and, and respected. What hasn't been in the record, and I've tried to get this in, but for some reason, I've been told that I should be back on task, that building was named the Levine Building at one time, because young Mr. Levine was seen outside by the president of Colby College, President Roberts, selling newspapers. He promised Mr. Levine, if he was a good boy and continued his hard work, he'd be a member of the Colby class that he had graduated.
Tom, we're not asking it to be the Levine Building, though.
No, it's important that inside that building, where they found the bank vault...
We really, we need to move to a vote.
...is where the decision was made to keep Colby College in the city of Waterville, inside that building, that's where the decision was made. All of that thinking went into Mr. Powell's thinking, as to why he guided Colby into investing into that building and other buildings on Main Street. I move that the appeal be granted and the sign be erected.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Can you abstain?
Yes. What was the vote?
First Property Capital LLC is requesting informal pre-application review for the Rusty Lantern Convenience Store. Thank you.
I don't know if anybody, staff is introducing this, I'm just jumping in, and I understand we've all been sitting for about two hours, if anybody wanted to take a, a break, I'd be happy to stay a little longer. I'm sorry, I was just saying...
Just tilt it up a little bit.
Yep, if anybody wants to take a break before I begin. I'll try to be brief, everybody's a soul of wit, but I, I would understand. Saying none, okay.
That's okay, we'll just power through.
Great, my name's Kurt Newfeld, I'm here on behalf of Priority Management, I'm sorry, Priority Real Estate Group, and First Capital Property Holdings, First Capital Property. Long night, we have a lot of priorities. I just want to, I want to be as brief as I can, but I just want to introduce a little bit, because we haven't been in your town before. We're coming in with an Irving gas station, and sometimes people say, "Oh, what is this? Coming in out of state, putting us out of business." We're a bunch of Maine people. My company's founded in Maine, my folks live in Maine, Rusty Lantern, who operates all of these is out of Brunswick, and we hire Maine people, and we use Maine banks, so, we're not outsiders. We're going to be redeveloping three parcels into one 1.22 acre parcel at the corner of North and Main Streets, for construction of a 5,050 square foot store. This store will have three fueling pumps, it allows up to six fueling stations at any given time. You're going to see the architecture a little bit, this is definitely a step up from what folks sometimes think of as a convenience store. We think of ourselves as a neighborhood market. I do want to note that we've been working with this for a while, Bill Mitchell owns the company, he has tenants in some of the buildings that have leases, which go into next spring, and we've been trying to tread a little bit lightly on what we're doing, so we don't spook his tenants. That said, he has spoken with his tenants, and my boss, who couldn't be here tonight, he's in Boston, has met with almost all of the tenants to make sure they're informed with what's going on, and our company will help with relocation, if necessary, if we need to pay a security deposit or look for places, both Bill Mitchell and us are working on that. That said, their leases go through the full term, we wouldn't be starting this project until the spring, upon the expiry of those. Project will require a permit by rule from Maine DEP for stormwater, we've already obtained that, and it will require a traffic movement permit from Maine DOT. They've issued the draft permit, it's up into DOT upper echelons for signature, and hope to have it tonight, because that would be the first time I ever had both state permits before I even met to a planning board, but we'll certainly have it before we come back. Here's the site, very recent aerial photograph, with North at the top and Main Street on the right. Oh, look at that. So we've got the three buildings that would be demolished, this one, I believe, has three apartments, this has apartment and an office, and this has office space. From the survey, the same thing with the callouts, we would be removing the utilities back to the mains, and basically, redeveloping the entire site. The new plan would have a full access entrance off of Main Street, pretty much where there is a curb cut, and another entrance off of Main, the store would be oriented in this corner, facing into the parking lot, you can see the canopies, and that's where the underground tanks would be. These buildings all have what we call, these are Gen 2 buildings, they have large outdoor patio spaces, as well as some nice indoor spaces, it really makes for a much nicer experience. People can actually stay there and eat inside, instead of like buying a burger and sitting in their car. This one just shows the drainage plan, we would have drainage throughout the parking lot that would come out and tie into an existing structure in North, we looked at that with Public Works already. Utilities, water's going to come right off the corner, the intersection, we have both a two inch and a one inch, and there's natural gas in the area. So the landscape plan, you can see here, we've got plantings all along the street, we've got to have base building plantings on the backside of this, and one of the things I want to talk to the board about, get your feedback in, we've got sort of a traditional landscape line running down here, as, whenever the name of the business classification is, we need to have a buffer between us and the neighbor next door, as residential use. You can see in the top picture, this is looking from the parking lot back towards Pleasant Corners.
Crossing.
Crossing, thank you. Pleasant Crossing, and they already have some fairly mature landscaping here, and they have a pathway that crosses into our parcel, which we would like to maintain. Looking at it from above, you can see where some of those trees are, and what looks like vegetation here, however, a very recent picture, a few hours ago, you can see this time of year, there's a lot of gap... a lot of gaps. The ordinance offers for a commercial A-zone to put up a six-foot fence or a vegetated equivalent. My sense of it would be to go with more vegetation that's going to grow taller than six feet over time, and do what we can to fill in the gaps here with a combination of evergreen and deciduous. I'm just wondering if the board has a particular direction that you would send us.
We, I'm fine with vegetative buffers.
Yeah.
As long as they're maintained.
Yes.
And they don't die.
Yep.
And they actually get built.
Yep, oh no, we would do all that. In the front, they currently have a short, a low picket fence, we would talk with the neighbors to see if they would want to extend that or plant around it or do what they would do. We have a lighting plan prepared, it's all full cutoff LED lighting with no light trespass except a little bit at the entrances. We have a little bits at North Street, and I would say just a very small amount of Main Street. Maine DOT typically wants our entrances illuminated to a certain level, but I wanted to bring it up in case the board has like a zero light trespass policy. Do let me know.
We do.
You do?
Right.
The light has to stay within a parcel?
Can it go into a right of way, or no?
But if we're talking about the driveway, and DOT wants the driveway illuminated-
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
I think it can be a little bit-
Yep, and along the budding parcel lines, it definitely drops to zero, beauty of LED lights, and you can put house shields on them if that's an issue, particularly with residences that have second and third story. We would sheet, you know, put a house shield, which is a fancy word for a piece of metal on the backside of the lighting. This is some pictures of the lighting on the building, did this for another project, but you can see we try to keep it pretty minimal with some under eve lighting. You can get a sense of the patio in a couple of those photographs. We, part of the DOT plan, I wanted to let you know it was discussed, we went with town staff, I'm sorry, city staff and DOT, and came up with this, basically involves doing some restriping within Main Street and putting this center turn lane in. We would have newly painted crosswalks at pretty much both corners, this one and up on Pleasant, with double-sided pedestrian crossing signage, and then that would extend north where the turn lane would continue and then taper off right before the railroad tracks. So again, we're looking to enhance pedestrian safety for anybody who would walk to the store. This is what the store would look like based on a rendering. You can see the patio area out front. These new stores have a lot of nice rock veneer, a taller sitting area that kind of comes out at the corner there. This is one in the wintertime, obviously, from Turner Main, one of the first ones we built, and they put large planters all the way around, instead of a railing or a fence, it gives it an open area but still gives you separation from vehicles moving around. And they have an indoor/outdoor fireplace tables. They really are looking to make this as an amenity to the neighborhood and the area. Indoors, you can see in that tower area with the tall windows, wingback chairs, the fireplace, it's a pretty nice place. And then they have a full order kitchen you can make to order, or they have a lot of pre-made goods. I went through that fairly quickly as an introductory, but I'd be happy to answer questions, and anything else you want to see more developed in the-
Kurt, I have a question.
Yeah.
This is the first gas station, fueling station that we've seen, I've seen as a planning board member. What do you do for installation of the fuel tanks, the underground fuel tanks, to keep any fuel from getting contaminated with groundwater, but how does that address?
Sure. It's addressed, all tanks now are double-walled fiberglass tanks, and then the walls are filled with a fluid, and then that fluid is monitored. So if you have a leak, it's monitored, it goes down, and that sends off alarms all the way, already it shuts things down, notifies them inside. If the fluid goes up and spills inside, then you have water from outside the tank trying to leak in, and then that also sets off the alarms. So if there's any puncture on the outside wall, you get an alarm pretty much right away. Since they have gone to the double-walled tanks, there have not been any instances of a tank going bad and releasing product into the environment. The fuel lines that go to the dispensers are also double-walled, and everything drains back by gravity to the tanks inside. When you, where you fill the tank, there's a bucket around the fuel, the spout that goes in. If anything spills there, it's typically captured at the bucket. And then every, the tanks have a 20-year lifespan. At that time, they can be inspected, and if they seem to be okay, you can get another five years, but no tank ever stays in the ground for more than 25 years.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Sir, is it a 24-hour service?
Yes, it will just have 24 hours.
The only residential issue that you have is the complex in back of you. Is that going to be an issue, do you think?
No, not at all. We routinely have these near neighborhoods, and, so we have recently opened one in Cumberland, Maine, there's one in Livermore Falls, one in West Paris, one in Bethel, if anybody scares, you would see what's going that way. And they're all, pretty much all near neighborhoods, some of the more rural ones are further away, like West Paris. But where we are closer in, they usually have a gazebo, and they put in these bicycle maintenance stations, the kids are, can come and they ride their bike, put them in there. The more rural ones, we typically have a generator. We don't think we're going to need one here, but we do try to make ourselves available to folks during heavy winter storms so they can come and-
Thank you.
Get something, yep.
Do you have an estimate of how many trips in and out per hour?
Mm-hmm. Sorry, I'm trying to remember. These things typically go just over 200 trips-
Okay.
-in the peak hour, which is why they require the-
The center lane.
The traffic movement permit. Since we went down to three fueling stations, three pumps at this one, it might have dropped less, but we'll have the full traffic count with our final submission.
Okay.
Do you, do you have a location in Topsom on the Middle Sex Road?
Yes.
When was that built? Do you remember, about?
It was about 10 years ago.
Okay, so I've been to that location multiple times, and I was always impressed with that, very well maintained all year long.
It's good to hear.
Yeah.
So that one, interestingly enough, I live right there, right near that.
Okay.
And that one is called Rusty's.
Right.
It's also branded Rusty Lantern Market, but the original guy who ran a little tiny gas station right there, little store, his name was Rusty.
Okay.
So, it's a little-
Well, when you said the gazebo, I remember the gazebo there, and I said, "It's got to be the same one."
It gets a lot of use, and that one, that one won an award originally because it was one of the few, one of the first gas stations, they had the pumps behind the building.
Yeah.
And we said that couldn't be done, and then they did that and worked out real nice. These particular, this model here won a national award for convenience stores, of course, because of its new design in the seating area and the flow of service throughout the store.
Yeah.
Rusty Lantern Market has about 30 of these, we, there are about 35 of them are on land we own, there's about 37 throughout with New Hampshire, and they're very rigorous about the maintenance and cleanliness of their shops.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thrilled that you guys want to develop in Waterville. I'll throw it out there, I'm very disappointed that we're removing four units of housing in Waterville, in Maine, you know, all of it, but, so, I wish there was another location, but happy to see you guys wanting to invest here, so.
And we will help, try to help them, and my understanding is there's been some housing projects in the area, I don't know how they fare rent to rent, but again, it's not like we do our very best not to just displace anybody.
Yeah, yeah, no, that was, that was really nice to hear.
Yeah, I think Bill Mitchell has some units too, he's going to try to move.
Yep.
What's your timeline for the project?
We will start as soon as possible, assuming it goes into spring. These things take about six months to build, so it would probably be April to late summer next year.
Okay, so you're hoping to come back to the next planning board meeting, I assume?
It'll, yeah, either in November or first run of December. Basically, we have everything ready, so, yeah, we could be back pretty quick.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Good luck, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Jeff, Standard Properties, informal pre-application review for a four-unit multi-family development on Drummond Ave.
I'll be very quick.
Okay.
Looking for the mouse.
It was a very good transition from one piece of technology.
I wish, I wish I said I knew what I was doing, but.
Good evening, Jeff Allen from AE Hudson Engineers, and I'm here with, for Standard
Properties, and this is a small property up on Drummond Avenue. This is Drummond, along the left-hand side of the page, and it's kind of a zigzaggy property. You go, there's, and from what I understand from the accessory, was it like leftover pieces of land that they cobbled together into one lot? And so what Standard Properties wants to do is add two duplexes on here for rental. So those four units you were losing on the last project, here they are. So the only issue that we have, we've, I've talked with Water and Sewer, it's all on public water and sewer, is some drainage issues. Right now, the water from this lot kind of accumulates in this area here. What we're doing is a little bit of regrading, putting some fill in the parking lot area here to kind of tip the water back into the corner here, and then I've got a catch basin in the corner here going out to a storm drain that's right along the side of the street Their units themselves are smaller, they're single-story. Each, each building is about 1,500 square feet, so each unit will be about 750 square feet, so it's, they're, I think-
One bedroom?
I think they may be two bedrooms.
Okay.
So a total of four two-bedroom apartments.
Just curious, or just noting that that's a pretty large parking lot. Do you, like, any reason, I'm just-
Well, we need-
You can actually tell me later if you want to talk about it now, but I'm curious why.
Okay, why so many, so much parking? The ordinance called for two parking spaces per unit, and we have a spare in case somebody's mother-in-law comes to visit.
State law has changed now, we can't require that, so.
Okay. We can lose a parking space, I, you know-
Well, I mean, it's up to you, but just so you know, it is no longer mandated.
I'll speak with the owner and see if he wants to drop that extra one. We can fit it there, it's, the design's done, I don't want to redo it, so.
That's valid.
So that's, that's the intent. There is like some ledge up here and down at the very bottom, along the bottom here, that kind of drops in. This is kind of in a little basin, and so that's why we needed to fill and raise the driveway up, and the buildings, of course, will be up a little bit. They're all on slabs, there's no, no basements to any of these.
And these will be rentals?
Yes, all be rentals.
What's the timeline for this, Jeff?
When is the next meeting, because I-
You don't have a forum yet, but the next meeting would be November 25th if you had a forum.
Is that the Tuesday before Thanksgiving?
It is, it's the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week.
Yeah, okay. We would like to get on the next meeting, because we're, I've, you know, worked with Water and Sewer, and I've sent a copy of this plan, the grading plan, to the city engineer to approve the stormwater feature, so.
So you would be ready for a December meeting if we can-
Yes, yeah, and I believe the applicant is actually speaking with code enforcement and getting the necessary permits to build this front unit now, so you may see some work on site now.
Dan Fredstreet isn't going to permit that until he gets approval.
Okay, well, you won't see any work on the site until, we meet again in December then. But, okay.
All right.
Any other questions?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.